Can you start it? Stand real pledge, please.
Roll call, please, Julie. President.
Counsel Sanchez. Counsel Richards.
Here.
Counsel Coleman.
Present.
Counsel Trask.
Director show we have five present with two absent. Counselor Gerson Protem is on vacation and won't be here this evening. And Counselor Gorley is working and not able to make it tonight. So that said, motion for absent approval.
Same.
Second. By roll call, please.
Counsel Trask. Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez. Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Direct show five eyes, no nays, and two absent approval of the absence of Counsel Gorley and Counsel Gerson. Before we get started, I'm asked to do the Microsoft Teams, please.
Need to read it?
Thank you. At this time, consent agenda.
So moved.
Again.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Trask.
Counsel Coleman. Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
I have five eyes, no nays, two absent.
Sorry.
Hi.
Counselor Richards.
Director show I have five eyes, two absent approval of consent agenda. This time recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody like come forth, be heard for counsel. Okay. On the old business. RCA Resolution Number 23 for 2022 Resolution certifying the city complies with sections of ORS 475B related to marijuana sales inside city limits.
Mr. Mayor, before you is an amended resolution related to the marijuana certification. We adopted a resolution at June 26th, 28th, 26th meeting that had ORS's referenced by a state agency. Those ORS's changed during the second special session of the legislature in 2021. They renumbered them. We've already submitted the state certification. The state agency said that it would be okay in this instance, but for records purposes, we thought we should probably go ahead and fix that resolution. So that's what's before you. 475B, all of those items changed to 475C, and then the individual sections had some minor changes in the numbering. So that's what's before you. It mirrors what you had before, just with the correct ORS's as the state has them now.
Any questions at counsel? Okay, counsel directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 27 for 2022.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Director show of five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of Resolution Number 23 for 2022. This time moving on to new business RCA. Is that?
Show Resolution Number 27 in the packet.
Okay, mine says 23. You need to do another.
27.
23 was the old one.
Right. And I believe that the motion said for Resolution Number 27. It's just the agenda, I think, has 23. So the agenda is the wrong one.
Do we want to do another motion again on this?
The motion was correct. You're fine. In that regard.
Moving on now to RCA under new business Downtown Lounge Public Address System Application. And we do have a visitor this evening. If there's any questions, Catherine Julian from the Downtown Lounge. This time.
Chief? Uh, yes. The downtown restaurant and lounge is expanding their service to include an outdoor venue during the Oregon Jamboree Weekend. And as part of that venue, the owner, Ms. Julian, has submitted a PA application, a Public Address System application for amplified sound. This is consistent with years past that the same style of event that they've operated in previous jamboree years. The actual PA permit is requested for four nights, Thursday through Sunday. The request is for the hours of 8:00 PM to midnight on Thursday and Sunday, and then 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM on Friday and Saturday nights. It's a, again, this is a yearly event that the establishment puts on. And I'm sure that Ms. Julian would love to answer any specific questions that the council may have associated with the event or her business.
Questions, counsel?
So moved, just recommended.
Second.
Motion second, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Trask. Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Director show of five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of the Downtown Lounge Public Address System Application. Thanks for coming this evening. On RCA Resolution Number 20 for 2022 Fee Schedule.
On page 24 of your packet is a presentation of the proposed changes to the city's fee schedule. Following the initial staff report, you will see a redlined version of all of the fees showing where the changes would be captured for this resolution. And finally, the actual resolution is on page 47 of your packet. And we are requesting approval of the resolution and the corresponding fee changes to our schedule.
Any questions, counsel? Okay, counsel directive.
The proposed motion would be on page 25 of your packet if you're looking for that.
If there's no questions, we need counsel directive.
I don't think anybody wants to make a motion. Mr. Mayor, should I make a motion to table this? It seems like there's something more that needs to be discussed. Second.
Second by roll call, please.
Counsel Trask. Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Okay, look, I have no nays, two absent approval of table on this. So if there's any questions or concerns need to be brought up to the city, so then. Okay. Moving on RCA Proposed Amendments to the Council Rules.
This is a, there's an RCA in the packet starting at page 69. Basically, these are proposed amendments that I've outlined here. Given some background in the RCA, it comes up from the Administrating Finance and Property Committee. They propose these amendments and ask counsel to review them and for their consideration. The first amendment that I have listed here is an amendment to, and it's spelled out on page 69 of my packet, number B there. It's spelled out in full. And the amendment, I won't reread that one because I'll get back to it in a second, but the amendment is over on page 70 where it's put out in full. The proposed amendment would be a, would just be a line at the end of that section on the previous page. It just says, "If city council member has participated via telephonic or video conferencing two times in a row, and requests the third time, the request will be denied except in case of emergency for health reasons or for an ADA accommodation." Now, that's the first amendment. And I will tell you that there is a third amendment that isn't on here that I'd for, that the, that the committee brought up. And why I'm bringing it out right now is that it deals with this Section B. It's just the first line that says in the Section B on page 69. "When unable to physically attend a council meeting, period, city council members may participate in council meetings, including executive sessions and work sessions by telephone or by video conference." They wanted to look into the fact on that impossible amendment would be taking out the executive sessions because of the reasoning, some of the reason was, is that they can explain it to you, but you don't know where that person's at or who is in the room. So there may be some contention there about an executive session. So I'm going to call that the Third Amendment. And then I'm going to go back now to the RCA and the Second Amendment proposed is basically, I've listed the Second Amendment proposed is dealing with dress. And this deals with, is with the council members. And it's a, we've got a section called 23 representing the city. And there's some sections in there. They don't deal with this in particular. They deal with other things in representing the city. But this would be in its own section, subsection D, which I've set out on page 70 in full. And it's basically based on the, if you read the memorandums that's attached, it's basically based on the value that the city council has in impartiality to its citizens and its position in making decisions. That's what spurred it into existence. And you can read it there. It deals with political logos and that sort of thing, bringing them to council and having them there. Also deals with ballot measures on that particular thing. You may want to, on the ballot measure part at the bottom there in that section, state law. You can do certain things with ballot measures and not. You may want to, in the future, put in an exception to the ballot measure as it's totally out as unless the council has by majority approved, set a position on that. And then that would be regulated by state law and elected politicians are in their own groups there. But it says you can oppose one or be for one, but then it goes on and lists, and on the next page it says, "This is what you may do and this is what you can't do." So before counsel would do one of those, we're in favor or not in favor of ballot measure, we'd have to definitely check with state law and follow their procedures there. But you might not, you might want to look at that one as not just a total blanket. Oh. Not being able to deal with that on a total blanket basis. I also put in there the memorandum that I did for the, the committee. It goes into the legal aspects of free speech and how the state stands on state law on it and in the federal, how they stand on it. There is an exception under state law for impartiality. If you fall within that exception, then, and that's what this, this, this section is based on for state law and then federal law, it would be you were in the flexible. You were being in the non-public forum, and that's the most flexible one if you read that in allowing regulation of whatever you're talking about. I do point out, though, I went into some detail on, on the polling. We don't do them anymore because we get everything by mail, but we used to go to polls. And there's been some on that, can you wear your logos and stuff in there? And they had cases on that. And the Fed said, "No, you can't. That's a neutral place." And we want it left that way. Just keep it that way. But when that came up in front of the Oregon, they said you could, and that was, you were only, only restrict disruptive behavior. So Oregon is really strict on free speech as in allowing sort of, as allowing it this wide on free speech and people having free speech. But there is this exception out there of incompatibility exception. And that's what that number D is, is set in, and that's why it's before you on that level. And then the memo goes into more detail. I did, on the dress code where that's what it's, that's what it's for, is a dress code. The Oregon House of Representatives said to maintain professionalism in the legislative process, members and employees should dress according to standards of contemporary business attire. That's what they had in there. And then I found several that didn't have, that I couldn't find anything particularly in the rules on it. And then I also found one that isn't there, but I'll just read it since it's only a paragraph long. This is the one for court, and it says, "All persons attending court must be dressed so as not to distract from the dignity of the court. A person may wear a religiously required head covering unless the court orders otherwise. Members of the public not dressed in accordance with this rule may be removed from the courtroom. Number two, when appearing in court, all attorneys and court officials must wear appropriate attire." So those are the words they use to, for this issue. And then, basically, of course, you've got your different options. You can not pass the proposed amendments, or you can change them however you want after discussion. One or two or three of them, they don't all have to be together. Tried to make that point. And then staff can go back and research more, whatever, or, or you could have a work session on it, or you could do these as guidelines, not necessarily as a rule, but as a guideline. And then, but if we do, if you do pass, want to pass one, it would be, I move, and I can read this again, but I move and resolve that the city, that the city, I'm sorry, I move and resolve that council rules be amended to include the following wording, and then we can put in whatever words we want. And basically, I put down as, at the bottom of the RCA, "Any amendment passed by city council will be formalized in a resolution presented at the next meeting to set forth said amendment to go into effect on that date per council rules being passed at this meeting by a majority vote of city council." Because your rules say that you can pass it at one, and it doesn't go into effect in another. And then our ordinance says it needs to be formalized or in a resolution. I can answer any questions on it that you have, or?
Any question, counsel?
And then what you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't actually have a question for Robert, but I will say that I'm terribly troubled by this resolution that we're being asked to consider at this time, especially when I feel as though it's being targeted at me, even though it may or may not be. I'm the only council member that is a director for statewide PAC. I do a significant amount of endorsements, even so much as the governor, commissioners, sheriffs. And so this is going to be greatly limiting me in that capacity. Not to mention, last week, when I was late to a meeting, I tried to call in telephonically, and the telephone wasn't set up. So I had to come in as I was in my work clothes. And who's to say what's professional or what's business attire, because that is my business and that is my profession and that is what I wear. So because I couldn't get through on the telephone and chose to show up late in my work clothes and still be present, you would want to make that troublesome or problematic instead of me just not showing up at all. So I would like to make a motion to table this indefinitely. I think this is a gross use of taxpayers' dollars to even consider this type of council rules.
I'll second that.
I'm aware of this was to be targeting toward any counselor from my understanding. So the one, the one thing that comes to mind, it has nothing to, as far as I'm concerned with the dress, as long as you look reasonably professional or some business attire coming to a meeting, that kind of common sense thing. But I don't have, the issue of dress is not, nothing for me. The thing that was, comes up to me is the executive session. I had a situation where I've had to deal with a counselor who called in on an executive session and had a family member in the background during the executive session. And it was brought to my attention. This is a while back, but I had to deal with it. So this is a situation, somebody's calling in on an executive session, and it's not open to public, and this individual had the public present. So, I mean, I think some of this is coming from in the past. So I don't think it's a target towards any individual counselor. So I don't, I don't see that at all, but.
Mr. Mayor, if it was strictly for executive session, then it would be limited to executive session, but it is including dress code and telephone for work sessions and council meetings, not specifically executive session. If it was for executive sessions specifically and only, then that would be reasonable because that is private information. But just last week, like I said, I was late to a work session, and then this week on the agenda, it's dress code and calling in telephonically. It just seems very not inclusive, very exclusive, more difficult for public participation when there's a limited amount of opportunities for the public to participate, let alone get elected to a city counselor position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to clarify that this proposed changes was voted on before the meeting that was, is being called into question last week. It was voted on before that. So it wasn't anything to do with last week's meeting at all. It didn't come into play because this was addressed earlier than that and was discussed in the executive session was the privacy issue. And then the dress code issue was discussed because when you're at the Capitol, the state Capitol, and you're on the House floor and you're making decisions that pertain to the whole public, representatives and senators are not allowed to wear anything that supports a ballot measure or anything that promotes their particular party or their particular agenda while they're making decisions. So these dress code or the dress code things were just about, we are voted as a nonpartisan person to represent the city of Sweet Home. And when we're making legislative decisions, to not be promoting something that's a personal ideology. Here, right in this meeting, has nothing to do with any activity outside of here, because outside of here, you are an individual, and you're allowed to promote whatever you want to promote. So that's where this came from. And, and as you can see on the Sweet Home City calendar, it was in an Admin and Finance Committee meeting before last week's event. So, or when you discussing that. So I understand that that may have been read that way, but that's not how it was intended at all, just as, because we're nonpartisan. And that's what we're elected to be for the city of Sweet Home.
Job, you have to be here today. Can't go home and take a shower first. That's fine. I don't have a problem. I came that way with my pillows on before too, because that's just the way it was. And I just don't have a problem. That's not what the intention was, and that's not what we're looking for at all. We want you to be here if you're late for two minutes. I don't care about that. So I just, I, anyway, that's where I stand.
So, Mr. Mayor, the way this reads is when the city council members are at a public meeting and a public event representing the city and/or city council. And we are always representing the city council no matter where we go. So there's no clarity as to just if you're sitting on this dais during a council meeting, or if you're out in the general public being whom you are. So for all of those reasons, this is not ready to be voted on today, and I still request the motion to table this.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to be, to table this because I think it'd be something to discuss, making sure that all counselors are present, to make sure that, because this is a And Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to be, to table this because I think it'd be something to discuss, making sure that all counselors are present, to make sure that, because this is a rule that is for us. But it's also needs to be remembered that when we are out in the public as individuals, we have no authority as an individual. It's only when we're together represented as a city council, serving as a council in public meetings where we have to make public notice. As, because four or more will be there in a quorum, that we are considered a city council. So, but we can, I think that can be clarified so that it is very clear for people if they're wondering, because that was not the intention at all. Not to silence, never once honestly thought of an individual. Let me discuss this.
I, this has been longer, more than a month and not only that, my understanding, this is not a target toward any particular counselor. We've had two, two, two matters that have been brought up. One is our business attire, how we represent. The other part is, to me was more important was the executive session. Because I had to deal with the executive session situation where that person had a family member present and that is a no-no. Public present executive session. So there needs to be rewording or some changes, I'm all open to that. So I have no problem with table and motion was tabled permanently, so modify the motion or put on that permanently, but.
I'll change it to a motion to table until we can bring it back with more clarity to where it's fair to all and all parties agree. I will make a motion to table it for that.
I'll second that.
Motion second by roll call.
Correct, I mean, that's, that's their, their proposal, their, they, they were, they came from the committee. These were, are proposals and you can, you can have a discussion on them, you can table them. You can have a, a work session on them where all the council people are there.
That's where I was going to go with this, basically you have a motion and a second, do by roll call, and then I was going to recommend work session.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Five eyes, known as two apps and approval of table in this. All amendments to council rules to a few future time for we have all counselors present and I recommend session. Next up, and this is. Going to be our. Christine was just going to love to give the twenty, that measure one oh nine. RCA.
Uh, yes, Blair Larson, our community and economic development director will be presenting the staff report on psilocybin facilities this evening.
So as you are probably aware, in November twenty twenty, Oregon voters approved ballot measure one oh nine, known as the Oregon Psilocybin Service Act. Which allows for the manufacture, delivery and administration of psilocybin at licensed facility. The code provides that a city council may adopt an ordinance to be referred to be electors of the city. That would prohibit the establishment of state licensed psilocybin product manufacturers and/or service centers. Psilocybin is often referred to as psychedelic mushrooms. Just for context, it's a federally regulated schedule one drug. But preliminary data from clinical trials suggests that psilocybin therapies are effective for treating depression, anxiety, PTSD. Obsessive compulsive disorders, smoking cessation, alcoholism. But experts caution that such fungi can be very powerful and even deadly. The city has the option to prohibit psilocybin service centers and manufacturers within the city limits. But any such prohibition must be referred to voters in this November's general election.
So the deadline, i- if you want to send it to the voters in the general election in November, the deadline to submit the ballot measure title is August nineteenth. And so if any action is to be taken, it does need to be done relatively soon. If the city wishes to allow psilocybin service centers and manufacturers, it also may specify time, place and manner restrictions. That would be typically done through our zoning code. Under state law, as it stands now, such facilities must be at least a thousand feet from any schools. However, we, the city could also impose additional reasonable restrictions on time, place and manner in which such facilities operate. That could include the zones that they are able to operate in, the time of day they are allowed to operate. And whether or not such a use is permitted outright or has to have a, a conditional use permit. And so the options that you have before you on this matter is you certainly can do nothing and let state law govern this area. If you wish, you can direct staff to, to do the work necessary to get it on the ballot. To either prohibit such facilities or have a moratorium, like a two-year prohibition that would sunset. And that, one of the, the practices that other cities are doing is that if you put forward two ballot title measures where you can go ahead. One would be to prohibit and then one would be that if, if the voter doesn't want to prohibit, they could just at least have a two-year moratorium. Which would give the city time to implement the land use regulations for such facility. In, just for context, also the measure one oh nine passed in Oregon with fifty-five percent of the vote. Lynn County actually had fifty-five percent against, and that was, that was countywide. Sweet Home was a, on nearly fifty-nine percent against was how the, the vote, the results of that election came about. So in your packet is some of the information from the League of Cities on psilocybin and a couple of newspaper articles on issues surrounding it. And happy to take any questions you might have and, and hear any direction you want.
Questions of council.
Mayor, so. This is going to be a different building, not, not the marijuana building, different building somewhere.
I don't know if a psilocybin facility could be combined with a marijuana dispensary. It may be possible, but they would be licensed entirely separately, the regulatory environment, so.
I, I just got a feeling that, that I'm going to get beyond that because I think it would have to be a separate.
Most likely.
I'm just going to assume.
Most likely it would, I, I have not heard of anyone who operates a dispensary expressing interest in also providing services for psilocybin.
Well, my next thing is, okay, so we say we don't want it. State will override us, you wait, they will, I guarantee you, they will override us.
For now, according to state statute, it's the voters that would have to make that determination.
That's all right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so Lynn County is considering putting this on the ballot. And so if they were to carry the burden of taking this to the voters, would we be needing to put it on the ballot ourselves or?
We would, Lynn County, and thank you for bringing that up, Lynn County Commissioners did vote to put it on the ballot for Lynn County. That is only, that would only apply to the unincorporated areas of Lynn County. So it would not apply, their measure would not apply inside city limit.
Well, then I think they would be for putting it to a vote of the people and let them decide.
Me too, I feel like the people should decide.
Mr. Mayor, then I would like to make a motion for option two, direct staff to draft an ordinance and ballot measure based on the models provided prohibiting. Oh no, I have to say that word, psilocybin, service centers and manufacturers without a sunset clause.
Second.
Second by roll call, please.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. Mayor Mahler.
Yes. True, five eyes, no names, two absent approval of measure one nine, potential ballot measure.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, um, one option that occurred to me, that I found out about after putting this RCA together is a, is a double ballot measure. So that you have kind of a plan B, so that if, if the blanket prohibition fails, you could also have a measure that at least gives a, a moratorium. To give the city time to put different rules in place. Essentially what that would do, do is if voters voted against it and wanted to have psilocybin service centers available in the city or allow them. It would still have a moratorium, a two-year period or so that would give the city time for time, place and manner restrictions. And, and any adjustments to the development code on where they could operate.
Do you have any limits on the moratorium and how many years?
Well, the, I'm not sure that they, there may be, but the, you're, it's kind of a, if you have somebody who's already not going to vote to prohibit it. Then if you have too long of a, of a moratorium, they, they probably would vote against that too.
True.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, you said that fifty-nine percent of Sweet Home residents already voted against it? Okay, so that's close to sixty percent. What would be the cost to do the second competing ballot title, just in case? I, I just feel like that would be slightly more confusing and result in less voting. So I just want it to be as simple as possible and most cost effective also.
Well, keep, keep in mind, every time you put something on the ballot, it's not free. So there's some hurt cost on the city too.
And that's fair as well. I don't, we don't have good numbers on what it will cost to put it on the ballot. It's been a little bit of a trial getting that information. It would probably need more to have two ballot measures, but I couldn't tell you how much the difference would be. But that's a fair point, if you would want, want to stick with just the original motion and, and we will proceed with that action.
I just feel as though the odds are in favor of the residents not wanting to move forward with that. And if we make it more confusing, it might give us mixed results and so that's where I'm at.
And Mr. Mayor, I completely agree with Counselor Sanchez, I think it might bring some confusion.
Thank you.
I agree.
RCA contract for services finance director pro temp.
Okay, yes, on page one hundred and ten of your packet is an RCA requesting a contract for services with Matt Brown Consulting. We would like to bring in Matt to serve both in an interim capacity. As a finance director, given that Brandon Nish has given his official notice to the city and his last day will be on July twenty ninth. We will need to bring in someone that can help serve in an interim capacity to assist us with financial services. And those, the scope of those services is outlined in your packet. The professional services agreement begins on one page one twelve. And the service, the actual services outlined in the scope of work are on page one twenty-one. And those services would include services as an interim finance director. So we are requesting approval of option two, motion is on page one hundred and eleven of your packet.
Any questions, counsel?
So move just recommended.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. Director show five eyes, known as two absent approval of contract services for finance director pro temp. Next up RCA for resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-two, extend the city's Sweet Homes workers compensation coverage to certain volunteer positions.
The city has provided workers compensation coverage, at least for, in the time that I've been here and, and from what I can find in documents for quite a while. For volunteers across the organization. We've seen volunteers in our police department, we've seen volunteers that we provide workers compensation coverage for. As far as the beautification committee, specifically when they're working out on the highway, that's some fairly decently dangerous work. But what we could not find in any of our files is any sort of documentation extending the coverage to, to those individuals. And our city manager presented us with one from Silverton, an example that they had. And when we sent it off to SAFE, they did recommend that we have something on file. So that we can pull it out if necessary, if it comes down to somebody's got a claim and they need to verify that they actually do have coverage. For the, for that particular volunteer. So we've put together this resolution for you, resolution number twenty-eight on SAFE's recommendation. It will go in our workers compensation file so that if it ever is necessary, we can pull it out and, and utilize it. To the best of our knowledge, we've been paying premiums on those, on that workers compensation coverage for the better part of a decade. So I can have, answer any questions you might have, maybe.
Any questions, counsel?
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, have we had anybody claim a worker's compensation for volunteer?
Not that I am aware of, we have not seen any claims in, in the time that we have been extending that coverage.
And the hundred dollars in premium cost, is that monthly or annually?
That's an annual premium.
Is it a volunteer line item with SAFE or are we classify, okay?
It's a volunteer, yeah, so they're, they're all labeled as volunteer and then something after that. So volunteer reservist or volunteer, I think one of them actually says beautification, volunteer parks, that sort of thing.
So lastly, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, do, does it affect our modified rating, I believe? If somebody were to get a claim under that volunteer?
It would, just like any other workers compensation claim. And at that point, the city would have to determine if it's going to pay the costs of the claim to keep the, the experience mod down. Or if, if we're going to have SAFE cover those costs. So that would certainly be something the city would have to decide if and when that situation arose.
That's my only concern, because with the SAFE claim, it'll raise your rate.
Yes.
And if we've never had anybody file a claim and it is also an expense. And it could generate more of an expense if somebody were to file a claim. I'm not trying to be heartless, but it will, it will add up significantly to your experience modified rating.
Sure. A couple of things that I think the city has going forward is that we have not seen an instance in which a volunteer has had to file a claim, thankfully. Second, we, and I believe this got into your packet, but our SAFE premium for this current fiscal year, twenty twenty-three. Is significantly less than what we have seen in the past. In the past, we've seen an overall SAFE premium for the city of anywhere between fifty-five and sixty-five thousand during the year. And this year's, I don't have the, or specifically in front of me, but it was in the upper twenty thousand dollar range this year. So we're, the city is saving in, there's, there were a number, a number of things that went into that. Our experience mod is significantly lower than it has been in the past. We are also, we've been grouped in with other CIS entities that negotiated a significantly better rate. So there's, there's a lot of benefit that we're paying a smaller premium cost. So there's, there's a lot of benefit that we're paying a smaller premium cost overall that, you know, could set us up for if we had to do something like this. And I think the last thing is in all of these budget lines, so beautification, the police department, there are budgets for volunteers in some aspects. So beautification, for example, does have a budget line item of $15,000 annually that the city could decide, you know, that's where some of the cost of covering a claim could come from. So there are, there are pools of money that if we had to, we could cover on our own.
Yeah, we've not had any claims, but if you have one major claim.
It could hurt, yeah.
You could really get burned. And the city's safety practices is what dictates our law. Yeah, so I recommend it, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, do we happen to have record of how many hours we have volunteers volunteering every year?
We have to keep those records so that when we can, we can file that with SAFE for the purpose of our annual reporting with them. I don't specifically have those in front of me, but we're probably talking, if I was guessing, this is a guess, about 300 hours, at least in the last couple fiscal years. And we've seen a lot more of that on the beautification side. The police department hasn't had as many volunteers. We haven't seen any reservists or anything in that regard within the last four years that I'm aware of, but we're, we're anywhere in the ballpark of 300 to 600 hours from volunteers annually.
How much would it cost to pay an employee?
We're looking, you'd be looking at minimum wage, which just went up to 1350 on July 1. So if I was, you know, ready for that, we're looking at about $6,700 in, in, in pay plus the, the necessary taxes, another 6.47% or so.
So as it stands with our statistics, $100 is a good deal.
Yes, significantly less than paying a, an hourly employee, yes.
With the hopes that we'll continue with our success rate.
Correct.
Beautiful, beautification committee just takes one, I, I see back issues.
Yeah, I think the other thing, if I might throw another thing out, I think the other thing to consider is without the workers' compensation coverage, you have to consider if they're doing work for the city or perceived as for the city, you potentially, not saying 100%, but potentially open the city up to some kind of risk factor in the form of a suit, a lawsuit of some kind, if the, if it happens on city property. So there are other potential, that, there's a risk management perspective to this as well to try to keep your costs and your, your liability as low as possible.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 28 for 2022.
Second.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Councillor Richards.
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Trask. Mayor Mahler.
Yes, make sure we have five eyes, no nays, two absent, approval of Resolution Number 28, 22. Next up RCA, authorizes to fill a vacant position.
Yes, on page 126 of your packet is an RCA requesting authorization to begin the recruitment process for our new finance director.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez.
Yes.
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 Councillor Trask.
Make sure five eyes, no nays, two absent, approval of filling the vacant position of finance director. Nothing on ordinance bills, reports of committees, any reports of committees? I will bring up the ad hoc, House Trask wants to elaborate, the Wilely Creek Memory Care Groundbreaking is scheduled for July 27th at 10:00 AM. All's going to be present.
Mr. Mayor, I plan to be there.
Me too.
Anything else to, reports of committees? For mayor's report, I think everyone's received a memo, email or text regarding Larry Horton's caucus group meetings that he's trying to put together on health, regarding health needs of our community. So dates of July 25th, August 8th, August 13th, and August 22nd. The Monday meetings will be 6:00 PM through 7:30 PM and Saturday meetings will be 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. So you may reach out, let him, let him know who's all going to be attending and what dates. So you want to add anything to that, chief?
Uh, yes, placed before you this evening are the legislative priority that the League of Oregon Cities put together for your consideration. And just as a reminder, at our last meeting, we asked that each councillor submit their top five priorities and we will, and submit those to Julie. She'll enter on, into the record and they'll be part of the packet. And we will be asking you to make a motion to appoint a city designated to complete the survey on behalf of the city council and staff, submit that to the League of Oregon Cities indicating what our legislative priorities will be for the city of Sweet Home for the following year. So if you can take a look at those and submit those to Julie, she'll enter them into the record so the public is aware of what each councillor selected for their priorities. And we'll take the top five and submit those to the League of Oregon Cities. Also in front of you this evening is an update on the city manager recruitment. We will be proceeding with interviews on July 22nd in the evening and followed by the final round of interviews and the, the community meet and greet on August 10th. We would like to hold that community meet and greet here at City Hall. So I wanted to have a conversation with you tonight to ensure that you are comfortable with that. I think it will be the most convenient for staff and I think that we could set up a, a great opportunity for the interaction by the public. But I wanted to ensure that that is the wish of the council and you're supportive of that. It would be posted somewhere, the occupancy. We would have to have the building official do an analysis to tell us what the occupancy is or the space. There's a formula that has to be filed, but I'm surprised it's not posted and we'll look into that because it, it does need to be posted. Are you concerned that we might have too many people for the, for this room or?
Probably possibly. If there is, then potential, then we may want to get rid soon.
Okay, we'll, we'll confirm that and if, if the capacity isn't large enough, then we will move it to the community center. Thank you for checking on that. We really appreciate it. Okay, let's see. What, an additional question I have for the council this evening is that given that our finance director has given his notice, one of the things we plan to do this next year was to put out an RFP for auditing services to try to find a new auditor. Given our finance director's departure from the city, I think that the timing would be very difficult. We're going to have transition employees, the, the existing staff that we have is going to be taking on additional duties until we're able to bring on a new director. And if we want to try to complete our audit on a timely basis, I think it would be best if we continued with the existing auditing firm that we have for one more year. And then when we have our new finance director and new city manager in place, they can put out an RFP this year in time for the following year's audit services. That would be my recommendation. But we are certainly able to issue an RFP if that is the desire of the council.
I'm thinking it's a good idea to close this year.
I'm fine with that.
And I have confirmed with our auditing firm that they are available and will be willing to service for, service for the 2022 audit. I believe that's all I have, except for, we have one final slide tonight and I would like to congratulate the Sweet Home Toxic Mopar Crew for their extraordinary efforts in putting together the Cut the Gut Crew's, Crew's in spot here at City Hall. They were selected as the winner. And so want to congratulate Tommy Mole, Jeff Hamlin, Don Mitchell, and Sabina Arthur, who are all members of that group. And you'll see the photo today of Don Mitchell presenting the trophy to Legia Mole, who's representing the city and she's also an extended part of the group, so we're going to give her credit for that. And so we're just really delighted that the city hall was showcased so positively in our community and what a great group and there were no burnouts in the parking lot.
Tommy.
That I know of. So congratulations.
That was a great event again. I mean, it was just really fun and Sweet Home City Hall did a great, great job, but the whole thing was just a lot of fun.
Department Director's reports, any Department Director reports? Director, director, anything you need to be brought up? Any train? Councillor been in good order?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, at the beginning it said appointment of Eva Journey to the library, did? Okay, copy, thank you.